We start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first order of business will be the approval of the minutes. And I believe everyone has the final draft with all of Commissioner Pace's comments.
I move adoption of June 13th minutes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so those are taken care of. All right. Next is the Declaration of Conflict of Interest. And I think we all know that the Chair, Mr. Hornick, is not here this evening, but even so, he would have stepped aside for what we're going to talk about this evening. So, any other commissioners? Everybody's good? Okay. So, this evening, we have a public hearing. It's a continuation of what we discussed at the last meeting, and it deals with CVAS properties LLC. And what I would ask is, is we have two items, so we're talking about one plot, but there's two aspects to it. We're going to basically talk about both of them at the same time, but we have to vote on them separately. So, it'll kind of help us as we go through the discussion. So, we're talking about CVAS Properties LLC, and they're requesting a special use permit in order to construct a convenience store with gasoline sales on a portion of the GPIN It's a vacant parcel at the northwest corner of the intersection of Fall Hill Avenue and Hospitality Lane. It's in a planned development, commercial zone, District PDC. Along with that, they also want to construct a, they want a special use permit to construct an automotive service use at the same location, and it is also zoned, planned development, commercial zoning. At this time, I'll turn it over to City, to Staff.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. If I could have a computer, please. We'll do kind of a brief recap here of the presentation of the proposals. They have been changed a little bit. Won't do much on existing conditions, we covered that, but let's talk about the proposed use, what's going on with the impacts, and whether they're mitigated, checking on compliance, and then we'll provide a recommendation. What you see on the screen is the overall parcel in Cyan. I'll get my pointer here. This parcel here, it is 2.72 acres, and they do want to split it into three parcels. Some background about this parcel, it's Zone PDC, it's within Celebrate, Virginia South, it's subject to what we call the side agreement, it's currently vacant. Fall Hill Avenue has recently been widened here. This is Hospitality Lane, which is now connected to Fall Hill Avenue. There's a planned signalization here as part of the side agreement for Celebrate, Virginia South. The property owner is obligated to pay for one-half the cost of that signalization. Also, as part of the widening, a bike lane has been added, or a bike path, rather, on the side of the road here. This is the general development plan for the 7-11 site. You can see that the site has been rearranged somewhat in order to bring this side of the buffer into conformance with the required 50 feet. It's still deficient here, on this corner here, you can see the 50-foot line here, they don't have the full 50 foot there. They are still proposing an access here, vehicular access, meets general engineering standards in terms of VDOT access management. But there is an issue here with breaking the trail, breaking the buffer, and the general character of the access, it's 40 foot wide. They did show some light markings here and here, which was a bit of a change, but it's still pretty low-level markings. I think generally, the other two things to keep in mind about this proposal, let me check, I'll check this. We do have a standard for something called foundation landscaping, which would require landscaping here along this building front between the road. It's not shown, if you all want to move forward, we just added a condition that they have to do it. Similarly, with this, this area here, and it's not 50 feet, but it's a minor thing that they could adjust, so we just added a condition that says they'd be required to do that. And then we'll get through, we'll talk about the impacts of the trail and what we've recommended there in a couple sides. This is the Valvoline. Similarly, the Valvoline has been, I guess, rearranged a little bit. We had issue here with the amount of parking spaces shown, was going to require a special exception. They've reduced that number now so that it complies, so that's good. One additional feature, they checked the necessary turn lane warrants here at this access right off of Hospitality Lane, and a turn lane was warranted, so they've added that in. I don't have much else to add about the Valvoline site. There's a Type D buffer that comes around this way. Actually, let me check my staff memo on Valvoline as well. Let's see. What we are concerned about, again, is foundation landscaping here is not shown. There are existing street trees that come up along this area here along Hospitality Lane, but they kind of peter out, so we'd want those to be pulled all the way down if this was approved. So, we've just added those in as conditions. And again, we'll talk about the access and the traffic light, maybe this slide here. So, one, I think the first question is whether or not access should be permitted. We had a good conversation during the last meeting, we appreciate you all taking the time to get, to get in-depth on this issue. What we've really looked at is, is not only what we've done in the development so far, but what we've done as a city when we built the trail improvement, and that's, that's what's going to shape our recommendation here ultimately. Here is two uses at the corner of Gordon Shelton Boulevard where the buffer exists. There are banks, they're typically high-traffic uses, that would benefit from some kind of vehicular access, and none was provided for them. Similarly, we have a Wegmans here, the buffer runs all the way along the frontage here. And again, in keeping with the character of this district that was envisioned in 2005, no access breaks were permitted there. Secondly, moving down to these pictures at the bottom, this was Fall Hill Avenue in 2016. This was an old 7-11, actually. You can see that there was a direct commercial access here. When the city came through to widen the road and build the trail, we closed it down, we actually closed that one down, and rerouted access here to an existing street. So, taking all that into consideration, we did also look back through the side agreement. If you read the introductory clauses of the side agreement, Celebrate, Virginia South was planned to be something separate and unique from other commercial districts. We think the berm and limited access is what makes that in some ways unique. The side agreement contemplates a high degree of separation of pedestrians and protection of pedestrians. It's not reflected in the current access design. So, two things here, I need to say, the applicant has proposed $25,000 for trail improvements somewhere else. That's generous, but it doesn't offset the impact or conform to the vision in our technical analysis. So, we are recommending with both special use permits that no access be permitted along Fall Hill Avenue. And we are also adding a condition, speaking of, sticking on access for a second, that prior to the commencement of either of these uses, that the money owed, or the money that will come out for the, for the signalization here, be paid in full, so that we can close that loop. Comprehensive plan, UDO compliance, I kind of hit on this stuff earlier. The uses are general commercial uses, I don't think that there's an issue with the use itself. This really is about access and breaking the landscaping berm. It doesn't seem to conform to UDO Section 7233.2, which does contemplate a separate pedestrian and automobile environment. The areas in red show the deficiencies in the 50-foot buffer that's required by the side agreement, wanted to point that out. We have added a condition to both, that the 50-foot wide street-side buffer, we just took the language out of the side agreement, be maintained along the entire property's frontage. So, it was very clear that our recommendation is no access, no break in the trail, and that this 50-foot wide buffer be continued across the front of both parcels. We do recommend approval of both uses, again, the commercial uses are fine, but we do have these conditions, I'll go through them one more time. For 7-11, and as Mr. Gant said, you would have to make separate motions on both of these, this is two separate requests. For 7-11, no access shall be permitted to Fall Hill Avenue. A 50-foot wide street buffer consisting of landscaped and irrigated berms shall be maintained along the property's entire Fall Hill Avenue frontage. Foundation landscaping shall be provided between the building and Fall Hill Avenue, that was a technical deficiency. And then one-half of the cost of construction of a traffic signal to be installed in the intersection of Fall Hill Avenue and Hospitality Drive shall be provided to the city prior to the approval of a site plan for these uses, and we just took that language out of the side agreement as well. For Valvoline, we also recommend approval, subject to the following conditions: no access shall be permitted to Fall Hill Avenue. A 50-foot wide street-side buffer consisting of landscaped and irrigated berms shall be maintained along the property's entire Fall Hill Avenue frontage. Foundation landscaping and street trees shall be provided in accordance with 72.5, that was a technical deficiency, it's minor, we think that they can adjust that before the City Council meeting. And then the condition about the requirement for the payment for the stoplight at Fall Hill Avenue and Hospitality Lane. That's the information I have for you all this evening. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any questions for Staff? Mr. Pace.
Yes, I have a question. The, on these recommendations, your fourth one is about half the cost of the traffic signal. That's required anyway under the side agreement.
It is. We wanted to add a timing element here. These two uses will both put heavy demand on the signalization of that intersection, so we wanted to just make sure that we were closing the loop, that prior to any site plan approval, we were going to have them, have the payment made.
How is that any different than what's in the side agreement?
The side agreement wouldn't require any payment. Under the side agreement currently, these uses could open up, and the city wouldn't make a request, and there would be, you know, it's just not as clean. We think that this is a way to tie the payment to the opening of the use, we think it makes good technical sense.
But, but Paragraph 9 of the side agreement says, "Payment will be due no later than 60 days from the date the city invoices itself at the address cited in Paragraph 6 above." So, we could even get that sooner, under the side agreement.
We could. This, this also adds an extra level of protection for the city, that we're not going to put more demand on the intersection without having that payment made.
But they, these, these could be read as being in conflict. They're two different times.
How are they mutually exclusive? I'm not following any of that.
Well, I mean, if, if, if the, if the city were to want this money sooner and build the intersection sooner...
Then that, that works fine with the condition we have, as long as it's prior to this, you know, they just can't get a site plan approval until they pay. I mean, that's, that's all, but that's kind of the condition.
Okay, okay, I accept that, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Is the city prepared to build said stoplight?
We're actively working on it, yes, sir. Investigating it, maybe some preliminary engineering has been done, and, and we've been working with these folks and coordinating, it's just, like I said, an extra layer of protection.
Any other questions for Staff?
Yes, actually, I had several others. Now, this, this parcel that this is, is going on was not part of the recent tax sale out there, was it?
No, sir.
Okay. It was interesting to, to look at the side agreement, they, it looked awfully familiar to me, but I couldn't quite place whether I had any involvement in that or not. But is there a Property Owners Association out there with architectural standards that's supposed to be under the side agreement?
Not that I'm aware of. We, we read the architectural standards in the side agreement and, and measured the elevations that they provided against those.
Now, this clearly called for a separate set of architectural standards that's in the documents of the Property Owners Association. And I was just kind of curious whether that exists, whether the city has ever insisted on that, and what's in it, and how it might affect this property.
Mr. Pace, that's a good question for the applicant.
Okay. And they were also supposed to, the, the association was supposed to be paying an annual fee to the city to help implement and enforce the, the standards, and I was wondering what happened to that. Okay. And I guess my last question is, whatever happened to the fire station that was approved and, and part of this deal? It was, it was right next to this site.
The site was dedicated to the city, but the city is now having second thoughts as to where the best place for another fire station would be. And as of this moment, it's likely not to go at this location, but the city is still thinking that through.
I mean, it sounds like a pretty good site for it, but anyway. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, any other, other questions? Is applicant here this evening? Yes, sir, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jervis Hairston Silver Companies. Mr. Pace, you, you didn't have a whole lot to do with drafting the side agreement.
I just can't remember anything.
It was after you and me.
I know, I know.
Could you, could I get the, the computer of the overall, the one showing the berm? Thank you.
Could we please have a computer? This one, or?
That one.
That one, I think.
Just want to, just want to make a few comments about, because I think you guys understand what we're doing here. First of all, if, if there is no access whatsoever off Fall Hill Avenue, I doubt that we have a project. And, and what we are proposing off Fall Hill Avenue, we think is the least that we can get by with and actually attract a use, like the convenience store, 7-11, and, and the Valvoline. You mentioned a minute ago that when the Fall Hill Avenue widening took place, the entrance that was formerly into the 7-11 at Bragg Hill was closed and was not given to them after the widening took place. Well, part of the results of that is that 7-11 closed. And in fact, 7-11 has closed a number of stores in the city primarily because they were facilities without gasoline sales, and in order to keep up with the Sheets and the Wawa's, they've been, all their new facilities that they've been building around the area has had gas pumps and gas sales. Unfortunately, none of those have been in the city so far. But I think for those of you who go, who go back as far as I do, you'll remember that there was a 7-11 at Mahone Street, off Route 3, at the corner where Dunkin' Donuts is, no gas tanks, that one closed. There was a 7-11 on Lafayette Boulevard, well, there's two 7-11s on Lafayette Boulevard, one's still open at Little Page. It has a small-scale gas, gasoline pumps, but it, it does rather well because of, I guess, the, the traffic. But the second 7-11 on Lafayette Boulevard, right at the edge of the city, and it's right into the county, Old Greenwich, it closed, similar to, to the closing of the one at Bragg Hill. And so, that's two closings. And then the 7-11 at College Avenue by the Pizza Hut closed, didn't have gasoline. And so, what we have done is worked with 7-11 to try to find them other locations. They've identified this location on Fall Hill Avenue, what, a couple hundred yards up from the Sheets. And they've studied that and found that apparently Sheets is doing very well, and often, there are lines at Sheets for the gasoline, and they think they can compete there. It's very similar to CVS and Walgreens, or Home Depot and, and Lowe's. They study the market, they understand where they can do some good business, and they try to locate there. But they would like some access, limited access, right in and right out off of Fall Hill Avenue. Now, we have our traffic consultant with us, Mr. Carl Holtgren with Ramey Kemp, and he's going to share with you how the right in and right out that we've proposed is not only safe for ingress and egress, but it's also safe for the trail. And yeah, it cuts into the berm, but the berm is there primarily because of the right-of-way that we granted the city in excess of what is typical in terms of right-of-way for street improvements. So, in a way, we're being punished for a good deed, but, but that's okay. You know, the other thing I did was, last time we were here, I talked about the trail and the use of the trail, because that was a very important issue, and, and, and I tried to make the point that, you know, most of the trail usage is east of I-95, and in fact, east of the Canal, the Canal, Riverside Drive, O'Neal Park. And, and I even documented that over the last couple of weeks before I took my god-grandson to Myrtle Beach. And I found very heavy use of the trail at O'Neal Park and Riverside Drive and the Canal Park Trail. However, beyond the Canal Park Trail at Fall Hill Avenue, on the west side of, of I-95 along Fall Hill Avenue, very little usage. But you know what? That really doesn't matter, because what we really would like is heavy usage of that trail. And I think at some point in time in the future, we will have a lot of use of that trail, because in Central Park, in Celebrate, Virginia, what we are also building as we speak today is 578 apartments. You're talking about a ball, a, a ball stadium in the area, a hotel, an additional hotel with 100 rooms or so. And all of that traffic, or at least much of that traffic, will also utilize or want to utilize Hospitality Drive coming out. I talked a lot about the internal traffic that would be generated, and we think that if you do not allow for some outlet or access to Fall Hill Avenue, you're asking for a Hospitality Drive problem later on. Let me, let me address one other thing before I turn it over to our traffic consultant. Excuse me. We, we made a overture in our narrative to offer a contribution of $25,000 towards trail safety, and the only qualification we put on it, we put on it because we wanted the city to use those funds where it would best be used to improve safety along the trail. That's the only thing we qualified it with. If you feel like there needs to be additional issues addressed at the trail on the west side of, of I-95 along Fall Hill Avenue, we could use some of that money for safety improvements, but the true safety improvements for the overall city trails network should probably concentrate on the Canal Park Trail, Princess Anne Street, and even perhaps a couple of the connections and crossings at Riverside Drive, and even Cowan. So, that's the only reason we did that. We felt like the money would be better spent in other higher-traffic and trail-use areas. Now, I mentioned that our traffic consultant had studied the right in and right out, and I had maintained that it meets all safety requirements of VDOT in the city, and it does, and it does not put trail users at risk anymore than any other use that you have. And right in, right outs work very well in this city. Last time, I mentioned also that there are right in and right outs within a stone's throw of, of the intersection of Colley Silver Parkway and Central Park Boulevard, or Cowan Boulevard, where the Chick-fil-A, the McDonald's, the Starbucks, and the Verizon are. There are eight right in and right outs that have been working very well for about 10, 15 years. Probably don't even notice them. So, so, right in and right outs are safe, we can prove they're safe, and our traffic consultant will talk about that right now, if you permit it, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, my name's Carl Holtgren with Ramey Kemp and Associates. We're a traffic engineering firm in Richmond, and we've done a lot of work with Mr. Hairston and Mr. Oster over the years on a number of projects. And Jervis did a really good job summarizing what, what we're seeking here tonight. Just to tell you, we've done a little bit, we, we've done some analysis of the intersection of Fall Hill and Hospitality. We have a, a traffic count that was provided by the city, and we've, you know, taken the, taken that traffic count and actually plugged it into our, our Synchro model, which is the software package we use to analyze intersections and traffic studies. We, we've added in the traffic, as Jervis mentioned, from the hotel on Hospitality that's been approved, and also the apartments up on Carl D. Silver, because a, a significant portion of those trips will also use Hospitality Lane. And just to give you a, kind of a sense of what, what Hospitality is carrying today, it's approximately 5,000 cars per day, which is, you know, fairly busy for a, a small road like that. The hotel across the street will add approximately 800 cars per day to Hospitality, and then we're estimating that the apartments on Carl D. Silver will add another 1,000 or so trips per day to Hospitality. So, when you look at the road today and then think, okay, there's another almost 2,000 cars a day coming to Hospitality Lane, you can imagine it'll be a fairly busy road. And with the, the traffic signal in place, we, we anticipate that there will be some queuing on, on, on a Hospitality Lane, but it'll probably clear out every signal cycle, but it's likely that the queue will reach back toward the driveway, the proposed driveway in Hospitality. So, without the right in, right out on Fall Hill, if, if the only access is to Hospitality, there's a chance it could be blocked from time to time, which would create a, an issue on Hospitality Lane. So, the, the right in, right out, as, as Jervis mentioned, on Fall Hill Avenue meets VDOT's spacing criteria from the, from the future signal. VDOT requires 250 feet of spacing, center to center, from Hospitality to the right in, right out, and our plan provides about 300 feet, so we exceed that standard. There's good site distance in both directions, so there's, there's really no, no safety hazard that this, this driveway would create. And in terms of the trail, yes, the, the trail would have to divert over a little bit because of the right turn lane that would be needed on Fall Hill, but there'd be, you know, pavement markings and so forth, just like at any other pedestrian crossing, that would, you know, maximize the safety for both vehicles and, and pedestrians and bicyclists. So, I think that's, unless there's anything else, Jervis, that's pretty much what I have.
And Mr. Chair, I'm commissioning, we also have our civil engineer here, Mr. Keith Oster, if there are any questions about any aspects of the project as proposed. Thank you very much.
All right. Any questions from the Commission for the applicant? Mr. Rodriguez.
Sure. Well, I guess the first one would be for the gentleman from the...
Is your mic on, sir?
No, it's not.
There we go. So, if I understand correctly, even with the, the current traffic of the 2,000 cars and then not, not additional of what the 7-11 and Valvoline is, if, if, as per the recommendation from Staff, that there is no Fall Hill entry, then it, it could potentially pose a safety issue? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Potentially, on Hospitality.
On Hospitality.
If the queues at the signal back up, you know, to the driveway, which is, is possible at the peak times. You know, that creates driveway blockage, and maybe people can't see, you know, it could block site distance and so forth.
Okay.
For people coming in and out of the 7-11 driveway.
And what about potential, even as-is, for what the, the new development in there? Have you guys looked at that? Just, even if there was no 7-11 Valvoline, when we put the new light in there, what that traffic would do? I guess for your other properties that they're developing?
We, we've only modeled the full build-out condition with the hotel, the apartments, and then with the 7-11 Valvoline, you know, fully developed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Pace.
Let me go over that again so that I understand, your $5,000 of 5,000...
Your mic?
Your 5,000 vehicle trips a day is, is at the intersection of Hospitality and Fall Hill with this project, the 580 apartments, and... with this project, the 580 apartments, and the hotel would be on top of the current.
That's correct.
The current is 5,000.
Correct.
And all that new development would add 2,000.
The hotel would add about 800.
Yeah, right.
The apartments would add about 1,000.
1,800, yeah.
And...
2,000.
Let's see, the 7-Eleven Valvoline combined is just under 3,000, so... But if they have the right in and right out, most of those trips would use the right in and right out on Fall Hill, because that's where the traffic is. So only a portion of those would use Hospitality. So yeah, roughly another, you know, probably under 1,000 trips would be added to Hospitality if we had right in and right out access to Fall Hill. Now, if that access is not there, then all 3,000 of those cars per day would go to Hospitality. So effectively, the right in and right out would take approximately 2,000 cars per day off of Fall Hill Avenue, excuse me, off of Hospitality, because they have access directly from Fall Hill.
Okay. So now, if there were no access off Fall Hill...
Right.
Then what would the numbers be?
Then those 2,000 cars a day that would be using the right in and right out would have to use Hospitality.
Right.
So Hospitality would have roughly 10,000 cars a day instead of 8,000 cars per day.
Okay.
Just a ballpark number for you.
And...
Excuse me. Correction. There would be 7,000, because you said it was 3,000 coming off of Fall Hill, and you increased it to 7,000 on Hospitality. So they would have 10,000 as opposed to 7,000.
Well, let's double-check my math. So existing, we've got 5,000.
Yeah.
Okay. The hotel across the street will add 800. Let's just call that 1,000. So now we're at 6,000. The apartments on Carl D. Silver would add about another 1,000, give or take. So now we're at 7,000. The 7-Eleven Valvoline total will generate about 3,000. So we're expecting, so that would be 10,000 instead of 7,000. That's, there you go.
Okay. Have you figured in a baseball stadium?
No, sir, we haven't. So that would be...
That's another couple thousand. Well, that fluctuates so much.
Yeah.
I don't know how you estimate that.
Yeah, that's a difficult thing to estimate, because some of those trips will use Carl D. Silver, a portion will use Hospitality.
Right.
It depends on the time of day as well, you know.
But it's definitely a bunch more trips.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah. I mean, if the ballgames start at 7:00 PM, that's, you know, you have the fans coming in the hour before that. You'll have employees coming probably in the 4 o'clock timeframe.
And the only contemplated road improvement for all this is a stoplight?
Correct.
Wow. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
I have a question for the applicant.
Mr. Rodriguez for the applicant.
Sorry, yes, for the applicant, I have a question. Can we show that map again? Yeah. I took a tour of this area more. I mean, it's been a while since I've been through all of the roads, and I saw all the development coming. And I'm just wondering, that parcel that's in front of the parking lot in front of Wegmans, is that one of your parcels too? Okay. All right. Well, that probably answers my question, why you wouldn't build it there at a better intersection than creating an issue.
Yeah, I just, Mr. Chair, I just want to answer the unanswered question that Jim, Mr. Pates, left there, and that is, so is that the only improvement the traffic liked? I didn't want him to forget the four-lane divided Carly Silver Parkway road that was also built over and above, about 10 times over and above, the use required for that road that's in place today.
At the time?
Yeah, but not...
Six-lane divided, six-lane divided, right.
But not nearly all that traffic would come out?
No. But my point is, don't discount the fact that you have a six-lane divided highway...
Right, sure.
...that accommodates a whole lot of traffic, certainly more traffic by 10 of what the uses are today. Shouldn't discount that.
And then I just wanted to make a point that the three 7-Elevens that vacated the city of Fredericksburg are all occupied by other establishments. They don't sell gasoline, but they are open establishments as of today, just so you know.
Anyone else for the applicant? Mr. Slomitsky?
Actually, as I'm sitting here staring at it, I really don't have a question for the applicant. I have a question for Mr. Craig and Mr. Johnston. I don't know if it's appropriate at this time to direct anything towards you guys, or...
Yes.
Okay. Is there any plan, I'm looking at the comprehensive plan, is there a plan to connect Fall Road with Cowan as far as, it's not showing a connection as far as a path. Is there a plan at some point?
To connect?
To connect the trail on Cowan to the trail on Fall Hill.
Yes, sir. That was adopted last night with the pathways plan.
Okay. And how would it, it would go along?
If we could go back to the map.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's okay. So as you all have been involved, what we've got growing here is a road network of north-south streets, now east-west streets. This is the Hamptons Two that was approved, so we've got a fairly strong grid developing on this side of the road. This property here, we call it the Graves property, I believe that's the family that owns it, is the last remaining piece that's still zoned R2. And there is no formal, that I can remember off the top of my head, plan for a road improvement there, but that would be an extension of Gordon Shelton. Oh, it's in the plan. Okay. So there is a plan to extend this road from Fall Avenue to Cowan, and that would be the final piece of the grid, as long as any connection that comes through to Central Park. And now with the pathways plan, we are planning a trail connection from this intersection, from where that purple line ends, to the Cowan Boulevard, and that would complete the trail link as well.
Absolutely. Well, thank you.
Just immediately, east of 95, where Wicklow intersects Fall Hill, will be where Gateway would be extended, and there's a, would be a bike path adjacent to Gateway extended. So there'd be two points of access between Cowan and Fall Hill, at the Gateway extended and at the Gordon Shelton extension.
Okay. And the reason I bring that up is obviously when you're biking, to try to, you know, go continuously rather than turning around and backtracking, it seems like bikers like that continu- continueness. So anyway, I appreciate you clarifying that for me.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right. This is a public hearing, so at this particular time, I'd invite anyone that wants to speak to this matter at this time. Please remember to state your name and address, and we have the lighting there.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Robert Murphy with Cushman in Wakefield, 575... Boy, drawing a blank for a second. I'm in from St. Louis, Missouri. I'm here representing Valvoline. We're a preferred development partner for Valvoline, and we've been working here to identify a site in Fredericksburg now for a little over two years. And in fact, have looked at a number of the different properties in and around the Celebrate development. We've been very excited about this property specifically because of its proximity to the hard corner there, and, you know, the widening of Fall Hill and certainly the added development in back with, you know, the rest of the build-out of that larger community. You know, Valvoline, if you're not familiar with us or with our model, you know, this is a growth market for us. These are corporate locations, so these are not franchised. They're corporately owned, will be run by a corporate team out of the local market here, and we're looking to develop six to eight in the larger market overall. But, you know, the nice thing about Valvoline as opposed to some of our competitors is we believe we run a nicer, a little more efficient operation. You know, we have a new prototype that we've been rolling out across the country. It fits architecturally within a lot of different communities, and we can adapt to architectural requirements. You know, the Valvoline model is that you never get out of your car unless you're having your tires rotated. That's the only time you leave your vehicle, so it's a nice convenient pull-in. They're in your vehicle, you're able to see exactly what's going on during the oil change. There's a camera both above and below the vehicle. You can see that on a monitor. The team is professionally dressed, well-maintained uniforms, and the goal is to provide a higher-end experience to the customer. We fit very well when we position near a grocery or something like a Costco or folks like that, because we find that we're a convenience for folks, because it's only a 10 to 15-minute service. You know, our traffic counts are low relative to most quick-serve type of uses. You know, if you look at us versus a quick-serve restaurant, we're a mere fraction of the traffic that they drive. But at the same time, you know, access is very important to us, because, you know, we build our facilities to have full circulation around them, and this would be a three-bay location, and we have a stacking lane behind it, and you can see that on some of the plans. And, you know, we know our customers' behavior is that, you know, if they pull in and there's going to be an extended wait because of some of the existing customers already in place, they like the convenience of being able to circulate quickly back out and around. But, you know, again, this is a market that, you know, is important to us. Again, we've been evaluating these sites for a few years now, and would love to, you know, locate here in this development. You know, we'll be adding six to eight employees to that location right out of the gates. You know, that's not counting additional new hires as we staff up for different shifts. If I haven't mentioned, you know, we don't allow any oversight, our overnight parking, nothing stored outside, everything's self-contained within the building, there's no tires, different things like that. So it's a very clean use, and we always hire a professional landscape crew to maintain the premises. So, you know, you're not dealing with someone out there on their brake with a half-broken-down lawnmower trying to maintain the landscaping. So we're very proud of the facilities that we built. Happy to answer any questions about our use, if anyone has any.
Any questions? All right.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm Ann Little with 726 Williams Street here in the city. I was on the original planning group for the bike trails, and that was in 2005 through 2008, and now we've seen expansion of those trails that just was approved yesterday by city council. The key to the whole thing is when we were doing the research is bikers like to go a long way. They don't really want to go around the canal path to the Heritage Trail and back around. It's a three-mile loop. So the whole idea was to do the connections, the connectivity, so that bikers can do that 10 to 15-mile trail and get some good biking in. And in order to do that, we need long trails that are not going to be broken by 2,000 cars crossing those trails. So I'm going to urge you not to break the berm. If I'm walking, yeah, I can stop for a car or two or three, but if I'm going 30 miles an hour on a bike, and I've stopped back at Hospitality Lane for the traffic light, and now I've got to go another 200 yards, and now I have to stop again for those 2,000 cars that are going to cross that trail. That's not what we look for in our city. We've wanted to have a city that was biking and hiking friendly, and now we're putting the baseball stadium out there. And I've heard many of my friends already say, hey, I can take my bike out there. Well, yeah, if you want to take your life into your hands crossing that trail. And that's really what we really need to think about. Do we want a friendly city to, that's going to be encouraging people to other modes of transportation? Or do we want to have another car-oriented development? I went out and looked out there too, and I noticed that Sheetz had 14 pumps, and yeah, they were busy, and they were only, you know, two blocks away, but then another block away was Walmarts with 12 pumps. So now we got 26 pumps of gasoline, and we're going to add another 12 pumps in that short span of an area. So are we just poaching from Sheetz and from Walmart, where those are tax dollars are coming to us, and we're just kind of transferring dollars? Or is this going to be a plus for our city? So I really want you to think about that as well, please. And I really applaud the Silver Company for coming up with the $25,000 to give us on safety. But really, the best place to make our trails safe would be to not break the berm. So I encourage you to not do that. Thank you.
Harriet Rowe, Brunner Street. Good evening.
Good evening.
I needed a clarification. In the original agreement, it says there will be no car repair places. In this description, it says there's going to be three garages, I think, that are going to service cars. So what's the difference between repair and service? And also, are the, they're talking about obnoxious fumes. Are the gas stations by Virginia law or Fredericksburg law required to have those caps that fit over the gas tanks so fumes don't escape?
Okay. So I think that the first one, we need to have the representative assisting the applicant to come back and answer. That's the service versus repair. And then I think the city staff needs to help with the legal aspects of what Virginia, Fredericksburg would allow when it comes to, I guess, EPA aspects.
We could answer both.
Okay.
The side agreement does prohibit car repair, which this use would qualify as, but then it permits one in a subsequent paragraph. So it's odd that it excludes it and then permits one. And it's in number two, it's excluded, and then number three, there is one auto-service use permitted. So this is the one auto-service use that's permitted. In terms of the environmental protection on fumes, I'm not, Chuck, you might know that offhand. I don't know that aspect of law very well.
That would be regulated by the federal, proper federal agencies. The city would not be involved in that. They would be getting their approvals from the state, I think it's Department of Agriculture for whatever reasons, that regulates the fuel sales and...
Okay. They will monitor. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Steph. Okay. At this time, any other discussion with the commissioners?
Public hearing closed.
Oh, sorry. Any other folks to comment? Thank you, Mr. Pates. And at this time, the public hearing is closed? And is there any other comments from the commission? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion, and we have to do it separately. So the first one would be the entertainment of a motion for the request of a special-use permit in order to construct a convenience store with gasoline sales on a portion of GPIN 7769-78-7674, which is the parcel northwest corner of the intersection of Fall Hill Avenue and Hospitality Lane, and it is zoned PDC.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have a motion, but I do have a comment.
Yes, sir.
It seems to me that the planning staff has some serious reservations about this application, as do I. And I just think it, I question why the recommendation should be to recommend approval if these four conditions are met, because if the application is changed so that there's no longer any cut in the berm and access off Fall Hill Avenue, to me, that's a different application, which the planning commission should have a chance then to look at. But to simply pass this along to the council when you don't know what an alternative might be, I think is not the best way for us to act. And I think that it would be better to recommend a denial of this application at this time. And I would support such a motion if someone would like to make it.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, I have a question for Steph, and it would probably be good to have the city attorney here. Sad that she's not here. If we approve it with the conditions that you've stated about not having access to Fall Hill, what are the applicant's remedies? Do they, they can't, they don't appeal it because it's not rejected?
All you all are doing is making a recommendation to city council.
Right.
And to get to Mr. Pates' question, we feel that we do know what the technical issues are here, and that's why we're confident putting very specific conditions on an approval. Hopefully, we would work... Hopefully, we would work that out before a city council meeting, you know. But it's, these uses aren't so egregious that they shouldn't be approved on their face. They could be good. But focusing on that access, I think, is a big deal. But all you're doing is making a recommendation. City council can take that for what it's worth. There's no need to appeal it. It is just a recommendation.
Well, so that's my question. Okay. So if we were to, let's say, today we voted it down altogether, it would go to the city council and they would, I may ask it differently, I'm sorry. If we were to support this as it's written, could the city council then take out that?
Yes.
Those conditions or add them back in?
They can, yes, sir. They can modify your recommendation anyway.
Okay. All right. I'm just trying to work in my head, you know, because I know how I would like to vote on this issue, but I don't know what, whether I may get better or worse for city council going forward, depending on our recommendation of how we put it forward.
So, okay, so for... So let me...
Mr. Cant, if I could make an observation.
Sir.
Particularly about Mr. Rodriguez's comments in terms of legal advice. We did have discussions with the city attorney about how to move forward with this somewhat complex situation. And her sense is, is that the planning commission should do the right thing from a planning perspective and let the council worry about the legal issues. So I think that that's good advice. You do what you think is the right thing to do from a planning perspective. That's your job. You're the planning commission. The council and the city attorney will sort out moving forward.
Mr. Chairman, I guess my concern there is I think for us to make a reasoned judgment on an application, we need to know what it is. And I think that if these things get taken out about the berm and the access, to me, that is a different application.
And I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Pates, and that's not illogical and it is different. We don't think it's too terribly different, but that is a matter of opinion. And certainly, if you, you as a group feel comfortable just saying, just saying no, just say no.
For what it's worth, I was not going to vote for any proposal that takes any part of the trail out. So, I mean, I don't, you're right, but at the same time, I'm willing to move that we adopt this as it is. However, I'd like to point out that you guys moved it all down here and I don't have a voting machine, so I just don't know. Am I supposed to go to the other person's? Okay, that's fine.
I'm glad you clarified.
Okay, but it's outside my desk. I just want you to know that.
It's outside the box here.
Okay.
Okay, so can we come back to, we really are at a motion and I think that the staff has given good counsel, both Mr. Johnson and Mr. Craig, in that, you know, we're here to determine the merits of what we have and city council will take it from there. And...
Sure, I'll do it. Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we disapprove this application as presented. What do I need to say?
The first one.
The first one?
Recommend denial.
Can you be helpful with these stated grounds, the reasons for it?
Yeah, because I was just about to say, I'm not sure if you can say that knowing that you have this in front of you and what the staff has recommended.
Sure.
So you have to kind of put some...
Right, okay. And so my grounds would be on the overall safety of the residents of the city of Fredericksburg. I have some concerns with, even if we were to have the one entrance, we're already talking about 10,000 people a day that would go through that intersection. And I just think it's even more safety issue. I mean, yes, we're going to put a light there and there's a way for pedestrians to walk through, but I think, I think we'd be naive to think that the pedestrian foot traffic is not going to increase exponentially, especially with this new stadium coming. You know, some of our good citizens yesterday also proffered about families walking. You know, there's 800 homes that are within a mile and a half of the ballpark. We're talking about bicycles, you know, and maybe there's more bike racks at the stadium, things like that. So I'm concerned about pedestrian safety. And I think, you know, while I am, would like to be pro-business and I think, you know, maybe the recommendations they've made provides them an opportunity to still have that there, the overall safety of the people of Fredericksburg, I still think trumps that issue.
Mr. Rodriguez, that land is not going to remain fallow forever. So I don't see what we're going to do except to delay Valvoline and 7-Eleven because something is going to be built there.
Right. And again, it's not our place to tell them how to develop that land, but maybe if they put the, they swap the office space to that corner and put the gas station on the other end, you know, that would provide more opportunity for them to go out the other direction into the three and three lane versus forcing them to go down Fall Hill. You know, but again, that's not our place to tell them or suggest to them how they should...
So we're getting beyond where we were with the motion and why you're making it at this time.
Sure.
So we need to come back to that.
All right.
And basically, your motion currently, right now, is that we, we basically...
Recommend denial.
We recommend denial of what's being proposed based upon citizen's safety.
Yes. And even the information provided by the applicant with the 10,000 people and that there's potential backlog and queuing.
Okay.
Yes, I second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. I re-prepared because I see some looks over here.
That's mine. Yeah, they've moved everything. I'm without one too.
Yeah.
Okay. Cash your votes.
Okay, it passes.
All right. Moving on to the second measure.
Just for the record, let me clarify Mr. Rodriguez's votes appearing on Mr. Hornix's name. Sorry for the confusion of the buttons.
Okay. Thank you for that. So the second, the second one is request a special-use permit in order to construct an automotive service use on a portion of GPIN 7769-78-7674, the vacant parcel northwest corner of the intersection of Fall Hill and Hospitality Lane. It is zone PDC. I'm entertaining a motion.
Mr. Rodriguez.
My apologies. I make a motion to disapprove this application as presented based on the safety of the residents of the city of Fredericksburg.
I have a motion. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
All right. Please cash your votes. And once again, keeping in consideration that Mr. Rodriguez is voting in Mr. Hornix's place on the board. Is that correct?
She said I was supposed to vote Mr. Hornix.
That's not Mr. Hornix.
It says his name right there.
No, it doesn't, no. Oh, why is he there? Anyway.
Are we okay?
Voted twice. Because I don't have one.
Oh, are you voting?
Yeah, but I don't have a button.
Oh, there's no button here?
There's no button.
That's it, so then you must be using...
You're going to get to vote twice.
You've got to use her name's table.
I cleared it for you.
Okay.
All right. Okay. All right, thank you. Moving on. Next on the agenda is the presentation by Mr. Craig for affordable housing.
Thank you, Mr. Cant. If I could have the computer again, please. I apologize in advance. You guys are going to get the B-team version of this presentation. Susanna is out of town. Susanna Fins, our community development grant planner. What you're going to see tonight is a collection of a lot of data. And not only a collection of data, but a synthesis of a lot of data that she knows the technical ins and outs of. I'm going to do my best to answer the questions. But what it identifies is the affordable housing issue in the city of Fredericksburg and how that corresponds to our region. And let me see, that was, okay. You can see the kind of parts of the presentation listed there at the bottom. We're going to talk about what started this, or at least what brought it to a head, because we've been having this conversation now for a while. Go over existing policies, go over affordability conditions and next steps. And some of those next steps, we've kind of moved forward on. This presentation was given to the city council probably a month or at least two meetings ago. And since that time, we've actually brought a guy named Michael Spotts, who is an affordable, affordability housing consultant onboard to help us craft an RFP to finish the good work that you'll see presented here tonight in a larger affordable housing action plan. So knowing all that, let me see if I can, if I can get through this one. So as you all know, the Silver Company purchased the mobile home park that's across from the Chipotle Cowan Commercial Development and with an eye towards redeveloping it. Currently, it's proposed to be a 7-Eleven and fast food use and a grocery store. But prior to commencing that type of work, several things would be needed, including comprehensive plan amendment and working with the folks in the mobile home park to relocate. They have issued notices, I don't know what it is, a notice to vacate of November 30th. They did that back in May. That gave those residents six months, I think is what is legally required to vacate the property. And now, they have offered some relocation assistance, but now I think the folks that are still there are living their rent free in an effort to help them save up money to move on somewhere else. So this was kind of the flashpoint. They wrote a letter asking the city council to initiate a comprehensive plan amendment and the city council called a timeout to talk about affordable housing. It's not new. We've been talking about this since 1989. This is the city's affordable housing policy. I like the goal. I think it's worth reading. All persons who live and/or work within the city of Fredericksburg should have the opportunity to rent or purchase safe, decent housing within their means. And then it's got several objectives in there that we've been working on ever since. The comprehensive plan adopted in 2015 kind of continues this effort at planning for affordable housing. We picked the three most relevant goals here. We have the same goal adopted as number seven. The variety of housing is probably the most interesting one. The approach that the city has taken is to approve housing, which is, sounds minor, but it's a big deal. It's hard to approve an apartment complex when they need rezoning. It's hard. It seems to just really, people really need to weigh that. But we have done that in the city of Fredericksburg and that has been one of the biggest means by which we have created affordable housing. And also, we have a goal of homeownership and you can see the percentage there that we shoot for, 40%. So, you know, you think about rezonings like Highlander, that was a big issue for the city council, having 91 townhomes on marginal land adjacent to the downtown with concerns about impacts for Lafayette Boulevard. What made a lot of sense was providing the opportunity for homeownership for 91 more folks in Area 7, which, as we have that conversation, we'll talk more and more about how rare that is. The city council has created several priorities. I'm not sure the total number, but council priority number 33 is to create a regional housing plan. That started Susanna on this path of collecting this data. She's established working groups with regional folks and really started to lay the groundwork for what we're trying to finish here. This is part of the council's priorities and we've been diligently working through. So again, this is all kind of the planning efforts that have gone into affordable housing so far and the existing policies that are in place. Before I leave that, go to some data. The other interesting policy that has come up and I want to make sure that we talk about, when the Hampton's two rezoning came forward to the city council, city council did a lot of work on putting or working with the applicant to craft a proffer that a certain percentage of those units and the apartments would be, would meet affordability standards as defined by the federal government for their programs. So I think 10% of the units were required to meet affordability for a certain amount of time. So that was another policy that the city council, a more informal policy, but certainly an action that was taken to promote affordable housing. And also, as part of that rezoning, the Nussbaum Group gave the city $100,000 for affordable issues and we're using some of that money now to kind of complete this work. What you see here on the screen is Fredericksburg's median household income is $53,980. And then Susanna went through the math to show with utilities and rent what housing affordability was. So ultimately, if you make $53,980, your rent on its own, to be affordable would be $1,000 a month. We have 4,800 households under the median income and we have 2,750 rental units under that, under the $1,000 a month rent. I think this is all census data. So just right off the bat, we have 2,000-unit shortage in affordable dwelling units. This is a map showing the different types of what we call low-income housing tax credit or project-based, which is subsidized, housing complexes. This is not Section 8. Section 8 is a separate program where vouchers travel with the person and we have a certain amount within the city that we can accept and we're at our, we're at our capacity for Section 8. New Section 8's not coming up. And Mr. Beavers, you jump in whenever I'm getting my facts wrong, please. You know, this type of approval of affordable housing at the complex level is something that we want to start thinking differently about. This is kind of a big kind of development style of affordable housing. It's garden-style apartments that come in 120-unit chunks. What's really worked historically for the city of Fredericksburg was the ability to develop all kinds of different building types and units in our neighborhoods. And if you, if you drive down Kenmore Avenue, I think that's where you'll really see the best example, where prior to zoning, you could build affordable housing units in smaller increments in different building types. And our neighborhoods are rich with that stuff. It's all currently not permitted. All those buildings that were legally built are non-conforming. So we're going to talk about a lot of different ways to approach affordability and one of them is to permit what worked so well for Fredericksburg in the past with different smaller types of affordable housing units. But certainly, a lot of the focus is also on building apartment complexes, which is what you see on the screen here. This is a chart showing the percentages of affordable units in the region, because again, we're trying to take a regional focus. And what we've heard from the city council again last night is that it's got to be regional. We can't be the only person with skin in this game. It's a regional problem. So the chart on the left shows the total amount of affordable units based on that map that we showed you, which would be the median income and then factoring in the rents and showing where, who had the affordable units. So we have 28% of the region's affordable units. And then the project-based units. So if you take this map and you can see that most of our project-based units are the low-income housing tax credit. Call it workforce housing. We're in the Washington area median income bracket, so our median income is more workforce than super affordable. Like, it's not reflective of a retail worker. It's more of a person making $53,000 a year. So when you look at the purple, you're seeing just general apartment complexes that take advantage of that low-income housing tax credit. And that's what you see there in the 63% project-based units. This chart shows the housing burden as a percentage of population. And Suzanne has broken it down by owner and renter and again, it's just taking the census data to see who is spending more than 30% of their median income on housing. And you can see that 51% of us do. That means over half of us in this room are probably housing burdened. That is disproportionately affects renters. I had an interesting conversation with Mr. Beavers today about what that meant for homeowners or people that are buying very expensive housing, which we have a lot of in the city. And there's some, you know, if you're able to afford a million-dollar home, is 30% such a burden? That's a, that's a good question. So this is, but this is kind of just general data that we're looking at to see, you know, what the extent of the problem is. It's not just about how much you pay on your house. Affordability has a lot to do with where you live and how you get to your job and where your job is located, because those costs are, it's how you live. It's not disposable income. It's not things that you use for food. It's just, it's the money you spend to go make money. So the darker colors indicate where housing, housing burden plus transportation spreads out through the region. Am I reading that chart right? This may just be housing burdened. This is where Susanna really benefits. This may be just the burden. Yeah. So we have another slide with the transportation cost factored in there too. And what you'll see is that those, the middle of Spotsylvania County looks relatively affordable. When you factor in transportation, it's got a, it's got a housing problem. When you factor in transportation, it's, it's got a, it's got a housing problem as well. This, this data is from census to census. I'm eighty percent sure on that. I think Karen and Susanna do that. That's the numbers that we have reflected there. And what it shows is the population change and then the amount of housing units that we've, we've built to accommodate that population change. And you can see that there's a big gap in the city of Fredericksburg. Another, another affordability condition, I think this is the most informative slide for me. You have a list of cities on the left, and then the, the other columns in the chart are median household income by city. Next, median gross rent by city. And then the green is median home value by city. And to summarize this, if you look at the city of Fredericksburg, let me pull my pointer here. Here we are here, Fredericksburg. Here's our median household income. And the color, the darker the color, the higher the number, right? So we line up more with these cities here, which are southwest Virginia. Our median household income is comparable to southwest Virginia. And if you follow the chart through, here is our housing value, which aligns more with northern Virginia. So we have the median household income of southern Virginia, southwestern Virginia, and the median housing value of northern Virginia. And there's a disconnect there, and that's part of the affordability conditions affecting the city of Fredericksburg.
But these are cities. That's very different.
Defining affordability, this just gives you an idea for, let's see if I can do this right. The federal government defines affordability. We're not going to reinvent the wheel. We want to use what already exists. They, they, through your metropolitan statistical area, come up with the income levels. We're in the Washington metro area, which is a little bit higher. But when you see, they use a thirty percent, fifty percent, and eighty percent increment to measure levels of affordability. And what that, what we've done here is just, just kind of extrapolate that out through the table. I don't even think we did. I think they do this. For a one-person household, thirty percent of the median statistical area income is twenty-four thousand six hundred and fifty. That's the first, first here. I can point here instead of pointing with my finger. That's this, this number here. So thirty percent of the median area income for a single person is twenty-four thousand. Now, if you're three, three people, at fifty percent, three people living in a house, it's fifty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty. They use these metrics to define affordability by family instead of just by the individual, so that when you're looking at the different kinds of units or assigning affordability to a three-bedroom apartment for three people, the, the metrics can, can keep up. And these are the numbers that would correspond to the city of Fredericksburg. These are the, these are the, the subsequent rents that are defined by those programs. So when you meet the top chart, if you, if your income is at that level that's specified in the top chart, let me go back, get that way, that chart, then these are the rent controls that will be put in place by an affordable housing program. So if you are, if you're going to build affordable housing, you're obligated to provide someone, let's stick with this example right here, three people in the family at fifty percent. They're making, they, they qualify that this is the amount of money or less that they make. This is the rent you're required to charge them, no more. And that's how an affordability program works. Did I get it right, Mr. Beavers? I think I got, I think we got that generally right. Okay. Susanna wanted to highlight the top row, so I gave you the middle row. So what are we going to do about this issue? I'm going to take this out of order a little bit. We've hired the consultant, Michael Spotts. He came up last night and talked to the city council. What he is helping us do is craft an RFP, a request for proposal, scope of work, and a scope of work that we're going to send out to, to different housing groups to complete the study that we've started. You can see the data points. We kind of know where we sit. They're going to, they're going to take another look at that and make sure that there's nothing else that we're missing, but we've kind of gone a long way along that path. The city council and, and ourselves, we, we kind of know who we want to talk to. And, and again, this is a, we want information from you all, too. So, so we kind of know that. But what's, what's really missing, we feel, is identification of different types of policies. The Housing Trust Fund, for example, what does that mean? How do they function? And then an analysis of, of the feasibility of that. Whenever you're talking about any of these programs, do, do the numbers that we're picking, do they work economically? Can someone build that? Is it, is it a real proposal? And is it politically feasible? What does it mean for a city operating? What does it mean in, in the neighborhoods where it's deployed? That's really the benefit of bringing a, a future consultant on. But Mr. Spotts is just helping us craft the, the scope and the RFP to send out to folks who will then apply to complete the work. Who's going to oversee that? That's the top of Housing Advisory Committee. We have a Housing Advisory Committee operating in the city of Fredericksburg. It's two council members and a member of the public. They have an organizational role. They oversee, they provide input for our community development block grant funding, which is funding we get from the federal government that we use for housing affordability, through emergency home repair, through removing architectural barriers to, to housing. We do that. And then we have a couple of sub recipients that we work with, who we provide grant money to every year, like Legal Aid or CVHC, so the Central Virginia Housing Committee, the Food Bank, who runs a, a meals program for seniors, and FAHAS, which is a Fredericksburg-area HIV and AIDS group. And they all, they all collectively provide independent services. So we, we run a few programs with our CDBG, and this is the group that oversees what we're doing. They, they provide input when we fix a sewer lateral or something, for example. We want to expand that, add a working group to it, not for those daily tasks, but to work specifically and oversee the completion of the housing action plan. We want to bring a member of, an additional member of the public, I think that's what it was. But we've identified the GWRC Chair. Hopefully, that she'll, she'll want to be a part of it. She's new, but her background is in affordable housing. Executive Director. We want a member of the Planning Commission to be a part of that, and then maybe other members of the development community to make sure that everything that we're doing is feasible in that way. I think I said that right, Chuck. You got something else?
We, we are going to involve members of the financial community, but they would be advisory, sort of testifying to the committee, if you will, and providing guidance. It would be helpful if, if this evening, the commission would choose one of its members to serve on this committee. I think there will very likely be at least one meeting before the next council meeting on the fourteenth to go over the, the, the RFP. I sent you all out the, the text of the outline of the work scope this morning. I don't expect you all have that thoroughly analyzed, but that would be the point of the meeting when we do set that up in the next few weeks. The goal is to come back to the council on the fourteenth with a, a more complete scope of work and then attach that to the appropriate RFP format and then send that out and, and hire a consultant to come up with an action plan to deal not only with the regulatory issues, but the, the financial, the mechanisms, that, that options are what they are and what would be feasible for a city of our size and character.
Okay, I'll go through to see. I've got a couple more things here. So we talked about the consultants. We're going to finalize the plan. Here's kind of the steps. Sorry, I should have been flipping through these slides while I went over it. They're, they're also going to coordinate with Street Sense. Street Sense is doing a market analysis of residential use throughout the city. But we've asked them to focus on what our neighborhoods actually already provide. We don't want just a generic analysis of new tract home development in greenfields and new apartment complexes. We want to know how our neighborhoods function, because we're very interested in, in how we already are providing affordable housing and how we can, how we can continue that model, because that's the one that, you know, people have so much pride in, which was a, was a point earlier today. How do we get this great thing, these great neighborhoods that we treasure so much? How do we let them grow? Get more of that. Same, same kind of theme here. If you see the missing middle bullet in the middle, we've got great building types, different types of uses scattered throughout our neighborhood. And how do we, how, how does that happen again? But the incentive zoning, I bullet at the top is another process that we're planning to implement with the Area Six Plan. There would be an affordable housing density bonus, basically. Baked in that, I think we've gone through that with you guys before, but that's another way that we could do it. That's, that's what this slide is about. And then investigating alternative funding mechanisms, housing trust funds or other existing programs. The Housing Authority came up last night. These are things that we're bringing in an expert who's, who's got a lot of experience in the field to make sure that we're looking at the right things. So that's what Mr. Spotts is helping us do. And bring findings back for discussion in the fall. We want to, we want to get through this process, start the planning process and bring everyone to the table and hopefully complete this in the fall and winter of this year. And that's what we presented to council. Happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you, Mr. Craig. Any questions? Yes, Mr. O'Toole.
There's an extreme gap of the housing units, as pointed out in that. Maybe this is kind of a silly question, but what are these people doing that are caught in that situation?
That's a good question. Are they living at home with the parents? Are they overcrowding? What, are they homeless? That's a good question, and I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
You, you, you look at that, and it's staggering. You think, my gosh, we must have everybody's poor in the city of Fredericksburg. They can't, there's no place for them to live.
Well, and the other, the other...
Are these college students, too? Are they included in this?
Well, we're going to make sure that, that we're evaluating that data correctly to, so that us being a college town doesn't skew the census information. So that's one.
This just seems almost incredible.
And the other answer, it's not so extreme that they're homeless or living with their parents, but they're just living hard, you know? It's just, you know, it's a person that looks like me that, you know, is, is struggling month to month.
Those are the forty evictions every month.
And that's a good point, too.
Yeah, okay. That, that's a good point.
They can't afford where they're living.
But, but then what do they do?
They move on to the next place. I don't know.
Yeah, you know, I mean, that's...
That's part of the survey work we're trying to do to this extent, to figure that out.
Thank you.
Mr. Pates?
Yeah, I was just curious on, on this committee or task force that they're looking for, a Planning Commission member. What, what's the end result of that and the duration of this task force?
Well, the, the immediate, the immediate role is involvement in, in the RFP, and then they would be involved in the consultant that would be selected and then overview the results of the consultant's work and make recommendations back to the city council.
Right. Well, my, my problem with that is, is, I mean, there's nothing obviously wrong with, with having a group tackle this issue. But the problem is so complex and so multifaceted that this commission has never really delved into to any degree. I would hate to see us appoint anybody without some direction or discussion by the commission on what are our views on any of this? I mean, it seems almost premature to appoint somebody when we don't know where we're going. You see what I'm saying?
Well, I, I suppose that we're, we're going to learn by doing, and, and it would be my hope that the, the appointee would come back and be an item on the agenda to, to discuss with the fellow commission, the progress that's been made, what's been discovered, what the concerns that the commission may have to funnel through this person.
I mean, I have no problem with somebody participating in, in a scope of work of a, of a study. But beyond that, it seems to me that, that the commission as a whole should be involved in where, where that goes and...
If, if there, if there are regulatory changes as a result of the recommendations, then, then it will be coming back to the commission.
No, I think, I think it's a planning issue. It's, it's not so much a regulatory issue. I mean, there, there are all kinds of issues here. It's, and it seems to me that, that one step along that way would be to have the consultant come and meet with us.
I think it's council's desires to focus this to the Housing Advisory Committee with an expanded membership, so that it has... I think that's their desire.
I'm skeptical of that. Okay.
All right, Mr. Pates, any other questions, comments for staff on this topic? Okay, Mr. Beavers?
Well, I thought we were going to appoint you to be on this committee.
Okay, so I was going to move there. I was going to go to here. So, so I was just going to go there in that the fact that I did throw my name in the hat unless somebody else wanted to do it. But I mean, there, there are valid aspects that Mr. Pates brings out. I just don't know what they are. And I would agree with staff. You don't know what you don't know until you get involved. So, you know, I, I think that Mr. Johnson outlined it well in that we'll participate. So, okay, I, I did throw my name in there, but somebody may have a burning desire to do this. Obviously not. Looking at you, Mr. Beavers. You know, maybe you, Mr. Rodriguez. I, I mean, I, I just, I just said that because it is an interesting topic.
Well, and, and to be honest with you, I didn't see the email till this afternoon, and then I was concerned about FOIA on my other board, if it was something like that, responding to that. So I didn't want to respond. But I, I went to the housing meeting yesterday, the working group session, which that was kind of my kind of question, because I had at our last meeting had asked that we have a joint working group session with council and the Planning Commission. And then I saw that there was a working group session with council. So I don't know how that transpired. I'm sure momentum, but we had wanted to be a part of that process from the get-go.
But it was good that you attended, though.
Yes, sir. And I made a point, like, I actually, we had another meeting for another group I'm a part of, that we actually took a break out of our meeting so that we could come over just to make that meeting to talk, to hear about that issue.
So maybe you, you would be...
I, I'm certainly interested, but may, is there any way to get two people on there? Or is that, was that like a, a formal vote that the council took? I didn't stay to the, the city council meeting.
It's what council felt was an appropriate balance in terms of membership.
I'm whatever's amicable.
I think, you know, paper, scissors, rock. You guys decide, you know?
As long as we don't throw you in there, Mr. Beavers.
No, no, I will not do that.
We throw the paper, scissors, and the rocks at him? Is that...
So, I mean...
I, I'm certainly interested in it, but...
I mean, we can do primary alternate. I mean, but I think we do need to figure out how we come back and talk to the commission, because I think that'll get to some of what Mr. Pates has brought up and then make some determinations. And I do believe that at some point, there would be beneficial to have this kind of joint session, too, with the council, because we can get that insight.
Right. And, and like at the working session, I mean, I, I heard a lot of issues and things that would specifically fall in front of the Planning Commission as our responsibility and under our purview for review recommendation, so...
So I'm, I'm good with saying primary alternate, and we'll see how the timings work?
Sure.
Okay.
That's agreeable, huh?
All right. Is, is that okay? I mean, I don't...
Just for the record, let's have someone make a motion.
I, I make a motion that Mr. Gant be our primary and Mr. Rodriguez be our secondary.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, there we go. Okay, moving on. General public comment. So, any members of the public would like to make a statement? I would ask that you state your name and address and adhere to the timing aspects, which would be on the monitor there, on the, on the podium. Seeing no one move towards the podium. I'll go ahead and close the general public comment session there. Okay, moving on to other business. Any, any other comments from commissioners? Anything that you'd like to bring up? Any burning ideas? Okay. Planning Director comments?
I want to thank everyone who did come out for the work session this afternoon with, with the Street Sense folks. We're, we're, I'm wanting to sort of style this effort as the tercentennial downtime plan for 2028 so that we can try to focus on some long-term, big-picture issues, not, not just focus on individual issues, which unfortunately has been sort of the pattern in the past. There were a lot of good comments with everybody from the ARB president, three members of council, two members of the Planning Commission, and then the rest of you showed up a little later. So I think it was a good, a good interactive opportunity. There will be a, a full public participatory, participatory meeting on September eleventh. We will have a, some of the preliminary results of the market analysis on that date. There will be a work session with council at five-thirty on that date to, to brief them, and then a full public meeting attended by, it's going to be at seven-thirty. We're going to be using the old Panthers Bank, the old Fredericksburg museum right at the corner of William and Princess Anne as the site for that, that public session. There will be a desire for public input about what they value and don't value or, or would like to see. Um, there will be a desire for public input about what they value and don't value, or, or would like to see. We will have a, a focus of the downtown core and the surrounding neighborhoods, break down into small groups and have some discussion and come back together as a larger group. Then the first week of October is the five-day charrette. That will be in the same building, in the same location to, uh, to go through, uh, where we are in the process. I, I, that coincidentally is purposely scheduled the week of the October planning commission meeting. So, so I'd like to encourage you all to be thinking of a 6:30 work session at the charrette site to, uh, to hear what's going on and, and to make your comments as a group. Uh, we will certainly provide opportunities in scheduling for individual comments as well. And then, pardon me, and then, uh, moving along to, uh, um, then follow-up meetings and subsequent as to conclusions as we come forward. With the goal of trying to probably have another community meeting, November-ish. Date to be determined, but it would be, we'll try to have it at the same location, assuming that space hasn't rented out, because there, it is, it is on the market to be rented. And then, um, and then coming back to the planning commission and ARB and council, uh, and subsequent meetings. So I appreciate everyone's involvement today and in your, in your meetings as, as we go forward. Uh, last night, uh, at the council work session, we discussed, uh, Area 6, uh, policy plan. Got a general overview of, uh, of, of where we stand in terms of, uh, the basic principles. Uh, there was some disagreement from some members of council. Uh, one member felt we were a little too dense in some of our development. And another council member felt we weren't dense enough. So I think maybe we've hit the happy medium. I don't know. So, uh, we're going to be putting this on the council agenda in, in August in hopes that they will initiate the public hearing process. So we'll be coming back to you all. The, uh, Area 3 zoning code text amendments are, I think, a final stage of review with the city attorney's office. I, I think we're very close to bringing that to council probably, I hope, also in August. To, to initiate that, that process as well. And lastly, uh, we can hardly wait for our new zoning administrator, who will start work on Monday. And allow Mr. Craig to be a little more focused on his senior planner activities. Pamela Jacobs is, is our recording secretary from this point forward. As you all may know, Robin Martin is retiring the end of this month. So be kind with her as we move forward. I will mention that, uh, I'll, I'll sleep with that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any...
There's no more meeting in July and we don't do it until August 8th, something like that?
Our, our next regularly scheduled meeting is August 8th. At, at this time, I'm not certain that we, there's, there is a subdivision, one item that may be ready to be heard on that date. As at this point in time, I don't know that it will be ready. So the August 8th meeting is, is iffy. But we certainly could meet to talk about affordable housing. The timing of that would be very appropriate. So I, I don't want to discourage that. I, I think, I think the subdivision is probably a better than 50/50 chance that it'll be ready to go. So it's, it's more likely than not to be ready. So, um, I'm inclined to think we'll be having a meeting for at least those two topics.
Mr. Bates?
I, I was just gonna say, I, the discussion earlier, uh, this evening with, with StreetSense about the downtown area plan, I thought was very good. And I thought one of the reasons it was very good was that you had a, a pretty even mix of council members, uh, ARB members and planning commission members. And you might think about that for future reference, that, that I think that all three groups, um, brought their own distinctive points of view. And I think it was interesting to mix them all together, uh, that you might not have gotten if they hadn't been all together. It just sort of happened that way, but I thought it was, uh, a very good approach, actually.
It was planned, mister.
Oh, it was. And I should give you credit for planning that. It was a, a good plan.
All right, any other comments for Mr. Johnson? Yes, sir?
Well, my first one would be, oh, uh, is it possible for us to get like, uh, email invites, like calendar invites for these community discussions? Cause I really don't want to miss any of them. I think it's important for us to also hear when those go on, but, um, I have a hard time keeping up with all of them.
Yes, we will do that.
Okay. And then my second question is, uh, well, two, it's a two-part question. But yesterday I heard the term again used, "maker district." And I still don't think we've officially, right, that's the title that we haven't officially adopted. But I keep hearing it being used. And I also hear it being used by the Main Street folks. And so I'm just wondering, uh, what, from our perspective, what do we need to do to either ratify that or not?
That, that will be part of the Area 6 policy plan proposals that hopefully council will initiate in August. And you'll, you'll be having your public hearing in September.
Everybody's now using the title. I mean, I guess you tell something long enough, it becomes fact. But I just wanted...
Well, it won't become fact until it gets to council, so...
All right. So I don't know why we would be using that or encouraging it until it's approved. Just a comment.
I think it's just, you know, a proposal, but I, I, I understand what you're saying. Any other comments? Hearing none, meetings adjourned. Thank you.